Okay, I'd like to make a motion to open the October. Make a motion to open the October twenty ninth zoning board and appeals meeting, please stand for the first.
Second.
Second, full favor?
Aye.
All right, stand fresh. My pleasure allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, some housekeeping stuff, I'm just gonna do a roll call, just tell you me, you're here, um, and then we'll bring you up one at a time, you'll write your name, address, if it's sworn in. You have a court reporter, your name and address, and then we'll hear the applications, we'll have, everyone has the ability, we have the, uh, Republican talk on any of these, or we'll bring them up during, at the end, and then there can be rebuttal by the applicant, we make all decisions at the end of the night, so if you want to stick around, then fine, if not, you can call Kate one in the morning when the savings.
Yes.
All right, okay, make a motion, open sand path, full favor?
Aye.
I've been authorized affidavit and posting and a spoken certificate and letter of correspondence to the project.
We do more?
I'll do it.
I'll do it.
Yeah.
All right. So yes.
Oh.
Do you have any questions that you've got?
Yes, I do.
All right. We have a letter of correspondence, October twenty second, two thousand twenty five, Orange Town zoning board appeal, zoning control, term of the law, seven, not date, seven eight twenty five, date of use nine twelve, two thousand twenty five. Sand path, item of sand path, one Martha Lane, variance application to legalize existing deck and above ground pool at a single family residence, residents on zero point three six acres. In the R twenty two zoning district, R fifteen bulk regulations have been applied for average density, the variance request is a side yard and pool setback, northwest corner of Market Place and West Central Avenue. Reason for referral, task act group, the county of Rockland Department of Planning to view above item acting under the terms of human powers. And those vested by the county of Rockland Charter, one, the commissioning plan hereby, remand for local decision, uh, signed Douglas J. Schutz, acting commissioner. And you have a, this is just a fine, and it's Rockland County Plan, you could ever. This one is from, um, Rockland County Sewer District, sand path, one Martha Lane. Officer received a review plot plan, the last reviewed on July eighth, two thousand twenty five, with post J. Moran P. D., prepared for the above reference project, we thank the opportunity to come on and comment on his application. Our comment are as follows, Rockland County Sewer District number one does not object to the plan as shown, this project does not affect any sanitary sewers within district, we request no further correspondence for the site. Signed Nicholas King, engineer, Rockland County Department of Plan. There's it.
Okay.
All right.
Uh, ZBA, uh, twenty five dash forty seven, application of Catholic and Douglas sand path owners for variances from zoning code chapter forty three, R twenty two district group one. Average density, R fifteen bulk regulations, refer to group M, section three point one two, column nine, side yard twenty feet required with eighteen feet proposed. Section thirty three dash four, pool side yard twenty feet required, fifteen feet proposed, for the legalization of an existing deck and above the ground pool at a single family residence. Premises are located at one Martha Lane, two twenty three West Central Avenue, Purgal Road, New York, and identified on the Orange Town tax map as section sixty eight point one nine, block one, lot fifty four. In the R twenty two zoning district, average density, R fifteen bulk regulations.
Okay, yeah, uh, the, the sand paths are not in the community right now, they're down in South Carolina, the home was sold, uh, the people love these fence and they also love the pool. If you've visited, you can see the picture of the pool and the fence, it's not been objectionable for many years because it's.
Want to submit this to the record, sir?
Yes, you can. This is the pool, that's the fence, uh, very presentable, it's been there for many years, no objection, uh, they would like the board to certify it.
So you're, you're for the sand paths, or the people who bought the house?
I'm selling the house.
You're selling it, that's all.
Yeah.
And how long did they own the house?
Oh, from the original one that was built, that's, it's gotta be good thirty years ago. Maybe more, I'm sorry.
Do you know when this, when this was put in?
I, I believe it was pulled in, put in at least ten years ago. Could be more, I, I'm, I can't certify that, but it's in good shape and, um, I think it's an asset to the, to the lot and to the community.
I don't know, it's a question, is that a fire hazard?
There is, that's, uh, that's just amusing.
Not a real one.
No.
Hey, the dog.
I have one in my office, same way.
So you're doing wrong, you see.
Good story.
So. And what's the, what's the, what's the thirty one seven?
So back when they, I don't know, I just, I get that it's there, but they put it there.
It was built many years ago, why?
The pool and the deck, not the.
The deck was built and then the pool was put in.
Why is it an asset to the community?
Because it looks nice.
No one can see it, fuck that.
Is that a big deck or what?
I mean, it's not, it's not something that's gonna downgrade the community or anything, it's been there for many years, no complaints, and it's, it's enjoyable.
Very legally, that's my point.
The frustrating thing is, I, it appears to me it could have been moved that way and avoided, you know, the variances that they needed, had they gone for approval. It could have been directed in more conform, conformant location, but I don't, you know, I don't think it's that severe of a variance, it's just, it's annoying when people come this way.
Coming in.
And they're doing it and then.
I, I agree with you a hundred percent, what am I gonna tell you, the gentleman was a former employee of the fire department, of the, fire department in the town of Orange Town, he's been there for many years and he's retired. Okay, trying to help him out.
Did you just add to the side?
Right, it says rear.
It's a cor, it's a corner lot.
Well, this one says rear property line setback, this says rear yard, this says side yard.
The, the, um, building inspector said we're supposed to be twenty feet, fifteen feet proposed, and the other one was supposed to be twenty feet, eighteen feet proposed.
No, I'm just talking about this, this says side yard, but this says rear property line setback from the pool, this says rear yard.
So it's, it's a, it's a corner lot, I don't know how they, they figured it out, I don't even have that drawing, I'm sorry, I, you got one on me.
No, but, no, I, so is it the rear yard or is it side yard? That's my question.
And because the building inspector is the one that.
Well, pool setback is really, is, is, is either, is a rear yard or a side yard, it's not a pool setback, it's a, assuming it's a side yard setback.
Yeah, side yard.
You know, this is going though, it says rear property line over here, setback from the deck.
And then this says rear.
Rear property line setback from the pool.
And then that says rear yard.
But this is a side yard and that says rear yard. So maybe they made a determination at one point that that was the rear yard.
Yeah, they, they made the determination, I didn't. What they.
Do you know which side you're?
I don't know.
Open up side guy. Can I see that? They're both side yards now, all right? But so, so here's the thing with that, if they're both side yards, right, it's still, it's, they're both anyway, but I mean, it would be the least one is that really the, deck could fall into the approval of the pool because it's, it's fifteen feet and not eighteen, it's, it's closer to the property line, so the variance. You know what I mean, like this one's fifteen feet.
Right.
They're both side yard, it's not, this is what I have a problem with, the pool setback.
One's a side yard and one's a pool side yard, what's the difference?
I think.
It's not, it's both side yard, that's the point, I don't know why this.
I think the problem is because it's a corner lot, that's the problem.
They're both, they're both, they're both on the one, from the one dimension.
Okay, so then that's.
I don't know what, what is called, why they're stating it as a pool.
I don't know, I don't know why the building inspector did it, but he did it, that's what we're here for.
And the fifteen feet here, so that's yellow, that's the rear.
Well, I think, I think according to this document, that actually is side yard, rear yard here.
So there's two of them.
Right, it's fifteen and eighteen, I don't know, like I'm saying, if we granted the fifteen, the eighteen falls into.
This is from the deck and that's from the pool.
Yeah, they're both, they're both.
I think it just lists pools so you know what it refers to, not that there's like a specific pool side yard.
I'd be pool side yard setback.
Because you could potentially grant one and deny the other, you know? It would make sense, but I'm just saying, I think that's what.
Oh, I guess you could, you could get rid of the deck and keep the pool.
Well, yeah, my point is if you just grant the fifteen foot, you, you, of course you're gonna grant the eighteen, right, so it doesn't matter.
I'll just say fifteen foot to the pool, eighteen feet to the deck.
Side yard, yeah. We have to say side yard, so we.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, okay, you guys anything else, you guys anything?
I'm good.
Anyone from the, uh, audience wish to be heard on this? You know, about one Martha?
Yes.
I want to cross the street.
Okay.
Come on up here and, and, and we're gonna do that, but give your name and address to the court.
I could have, the next Paul Kearns, two Martha Lane.
Sorry, you're asking.
K E A R N S.
You can say two Martha.
Two Martha.
You gotta read that one, I'm sorry.
Okay, but I think he's pretty loud. No offense.
I, I've been called worse.
Not yet.
No, just turn the button.
Just turn the button or push the button.
You know, push it towards.
Yeah, I think it's on.
It's on.
Okay, now it's on. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, not the truth that you got? Absolutely, yes. Go ahead. All right, I support this application, uh, that, that's it. Fantastic. Okay. They're all that, thank you. Thank you. Anyone else from the audience wish to be heard about this? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that the last one? You got another one?
No.
Uh, motion closed, full favor?
We had three last time.
Make a motion to open, uh, application twenty five forty eight, Melissa K. and Nathan Apter.
Second.
Full favor?
Aye.
Come on up.
I've been authorized affidavit and posting and a spoken certificate and letter of correspondence to the project.
Yes, I know that, it's Melissa. He's, uh, Henry.
Gonzalez, yeah.
Well, that's an entourage. How you doing, did you sign in?
No.
Everybody gonna sign in, please?
You s.
I thought it was name and signature.
It's supposed to be project. What would be right for project?
You guys, you guys ready, you guys gonna sort it out, truth, the whole truth, not the truth that you got?
Yes.
All right.
All right, ZBA number twenty five dash forty eight, application of Melissa K. and Nathan Apter, owners for variance in zoning code chapter forty three, R forty districts, group E, section five point one five three, location of accessory buildings or structures. A and C, pool side yard, setback thirty feet required, twenty point four feet proposed, pergola side yard setback thirty feet required, sixteen point two proposed. Pergola separation from primary structure, eight feet required, two point three feet proposed, for an in-ground pool and pergola in existing, single family residence, premises are located at three Paul Place, Paulville, New York, and identified in the Orange Town tax map as section seventy point zero nine, dash three, dash two point three, in the R forty zoning district. You guys tell us a little bit about your plans and what you're looking for?
Sure, um, we've been living here about two and a half years, we love it, um, previously we were in Clarkstown, which had some really incredible town pools and, uh, and Orange Town has none, um, so we are looking to put one in our house. Um, the way our house is situated is kind of like on an angle towards the street because it's on a cul-de-sac, um, so there's not a lot of backyard, but there's a lot on the sides. The line in the back, well, what we thought was our backyard, um, once we put in the application, uh, turns out that's our side yard. It's our back neighbor's backyard, so they just put in a pool a few months ago, uh, but since it's their backyard, they were able to do twenty feet. But since it's our side yard, we have to be further from that same line, um, there's really only two places where it could possibly go, uh, on the left side or the right side of the house, uh, when you're facing it from the street. On the left side is got all these trees and they're really beautiful and we don't really wanna cut down a ton of trees, um, the right side's got nothing, it's very empty.
It's right by the runoff?
Yeah, also the left side's by the runoff, um.
I don't know what they call that.
Um, on the right side is got a few advantages, first of all, there's no trees, there's nothing there, um, it's actually further from all the neighbors. The left side, uh, would be pretty close to that neighbor in the back, it would be right near their new pool also, um, and on the side, on the right side, we're pretty far from everybody, um.
So distance from the proposed pergola to the house, two point three feet, is that gonna hinder like maintenance on the house or laddering procedures for firemen or somebody else that get up a ladder and?
No, there's really nothing on that side, it's the side of the house, um.
It's like the back corner.
Yeah, there's nothing there except.
You push it back, it might do four point eight feet, right?
Well, because of the way our house and the lot line, you can see the place that we have to put our pool shed is like kind of squished in, so we're for, far enough away from that property line. So adding the pergola was like kind of beautifying that area.
Well, if you could push it back and even with the, the back, at least even with the shed, and then you would get a greater distance away from the house.
The picture. Oh, just make it skinnier?
No, I'm not asking for any of that, I'm asking you just push it back.
But wouldn't it be too close?
Then it gets too close to the, to the back, uh, property, right?
You already asked.
Well, it's already too close.
You're asking for a variance for the shed.
Got it, it's a matter of, uh, I guess one.
We didn't think of adding, so would we have to, could we get a variance to, so we can get a variance to push the pool shed and the gazebo back?
Where's the gazebo?
Well, the pool shed doesn't need a variance because it's just a twelve by twelve structure that needs to be five feet away from the property line, so that corner is gonna be within that.
When you say back, you mean in that direction?
I still wouldn't have an issue with that, you know, being left.
That's it?
So. Because of this, uh, this is not to scale.
This pergola looks different, that drawing looks different than what you have here, you're rendering it, looks like, no, no, the pergola, what I'm saying is bringing the, taking the whole pergola and going this way, even with the back of that.
I think it is on that.
And this doesn't match.
Isn't it on that? Oh my god.
No, that's the one that, um, we didn't bring that, can you see it? Oh, here you go.
Oh, why did he do that? Yeah, we could do that. Oh, yeah, we could do that.
Anything, Henry, any, uh?
I think it was.
Second to go, yeah.
This is five.
Yeah. I think it was a mis.
Oh, yeah, and the rendering those li, the backs line up, but then.
Could blame Thomas for this.
But they don't line up here, yeah, so.
Well, this is what we're, if you guys, if you guys want it, so, I don't know, let's keep going and then we can figure all that out.
I, I think that would, we would be okay with that, especially because it would look nicer and it would be safer.
Is it fair to say the pool's like abutting the furthest part of your rear yard neighbor's property?
Oh, you mean like where, from where their house is?
Right.
Yeah, it's pretty far from their house, that's also further.
Farthest from, so.
From their pool.
He is.
Your pool is here?
No.
No, uh, yeah, about where your pencil is, no, for, closer to us, all the way up to us.
Twenty feet from that line.
Okay.
Right, it's a square right next to that, yeah.
Right around there, yeah.
So if, um.
You're talking about the property that's on green hedges, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, so his house is off the street, like you have to drive down a long driveway past another house to get to him, so he's really setback all the way. Um, he, I don't know how our houses, how his house, his house must have been built before there were like property restrictions because he's very close to the property line.
Yeah, he's really close to our, our, like.
His house is very close to the property line.
You know, the green hedges, right?
Yeah.
But that house has been there a long time.
Stream like back to your property.
That's like, yeah, that's town.
Yeah, so that's where like all the.
That's, so this is where their pool is, that, see, is here? That's the back one you're talking about?
Oh my god, sorry.
No, we're talking about, oh, yeah, but their pool is, that's what it's showing right here.
It's not there.
All right.
Next to his house.
Yeah.
It's lot five on that drawing there.
I keep, I always get confused when looking.
I don't think that's where.
He said it's lot five.
Yeah, that's a different house, I think you're looking at.
It's this, it's this house right here, lot five.
Yeah, so he's.
It is, it's like setback and you have to take like a little.
Considered green hedges, but yeah, you have to drive over. He just put in.
Yeah, the house that you were pointing to, I think, is across.
Across the water.
From us.
Yeah, they do have a pool, but I don't know if it's in use.
No, we can barely even see them.
Yeah, because when it's like the summer, there's all the trees there.
Exactly.
So it's nice. Come on, Thomas.
What about relocating the, uh, pergola to where the pool equipment is on that side? And then you could eliminate both of your variances.
Well.
You could eliminate what?
You, both of your variances, if you move it to that side of the pool.
How could we remove the pool variance?
No, I'm saying if you move the pergola to the other side of the pool, to hide the pool equipment.
Back where the pool equipment's going?
Yeah.
Swap those two things?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just a suggestion.
Yeah. I mean, it's kinda nice, I guess, to have the.
The pool shed is uglier than like the gazebo.
And, 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 and so I don't know how they would feel about having.
Yeah, well, it's noisy and it's also nice to be able to grill like by the house.
But pushing it back seems like a good compromise. Like ideally, we would have the pool shed even further, but because of the way the property is like, comes to a corner over there and the back side, it's really our only spot for it.
Can I see that rendering, please?
The rendering's not to scale.
That's right, I just wanna see the layout.
You could see the fence is the property line.
So the pergola is gonna be attached to the shed essentially?
I mean, it doesn't have to be, it, it's just like.
I mean, I, I personally, I think that looks better than how it's shown on the.
It does, I agree, yeah.
The, uh, survey here.
I didn't notice that it was different than our rendering, the rendering is how we thought it would look nicest.
Push it back to the ten point six. Inside sixteen. Ten foot six to the back, to the property line.
To the property line?
To sixteen, to sixteen two. Because it's so high, what's the height of that, what's the height of the pergola?
Oh, no.
Henry, do you know?
I think it's somewhere.
Oh, in the packet we submitted, probably.
No, it's probably like eighty, probably like eighty feet.
The corner's not there, but.
Yeah.
But it's not like a structure, it's more of just a move.
It's just an opening, yeah.
Yeah, it's like, I think we can, we could get a variance for something like that. Say, um, B M would say, right, he didn't add it.
Why does the pergola have to be away from the house anyway?
To, to not obstruct.
Oh.
For like fire safety.
You guys, any, anyone, remember the bus? I don't, I don't know if it's any better, I would say, if it's still serviceable, the house is still serviceable in each corner, right?
And I, I mean, if, if it's not causing a problem with access to any part of the structure, I'd rather be too close to their own house than.
Close to the setback, yeah.
Right, I mean, what is the reason that the pergola can't be right up to the house?
There's a code that says S V.
No, I know, I'm just saying, what's.
Fire code?
It's a.
It's for, um, it's for safety, like for.
Yeah, I think there's a variety of reasons that being one of them.
Oh, they don't know, there are reasons.
You didn't write the, you didn't write the code?
Maintenance, fire safety, I would imagine.
Um. All right, anyone from the audience wish to be heard on this?
Yes.
The one one, phone twice. All right, you stick around, you'll make decisions again tonight, all right, it's more than fifteen, two. Yeah, I think they realize we're keeping word, right?
The, yes, yeah, where it is on the drawing, yeah.
That's right, all right, make a motion, close.
Second.
Full favor?
Aye.
All right, uh, make a motion, open, ZBA twenty five, application for Alicia Plutunik and James Cook.
Second.
Full favor?
Aye.
All right.
I've been authorized affidavit and posting and a spoken certificate and letter of correspondence to the project.
James Cook?
Well, you guys are all, I'm sorry.
Um, a letter from the Rockland County Department of Planning dated October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five. Um, I'm Cook Bertunek.
Bertunek, yeah.
Twenty-seven, sorry, court, manchester, with the construction of two-story side addition, recovered from porch on existing district, apparently growing on twenty-three acres in the R fifteen zoning district. The parents have protested our front yard, side yard, and fellow side. Um, reason for referral, state review for the county Rockland County Department of Planning, if you, um, I am asking, return to the above D and L powers and are disgusted by the county of Rockland charter, I, the commission of planning. Hereby remand for local decision, per action, since there is no significant county, whether into community impact in the New York State uh general municipal law two thirty-nine. Therefore, the action is a local decision, it's signed, Douglas Schiff, acting commission of planning. A sign on from the Rockland County Planning Department, Jake Polant, dated October twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five. And. Rockland County Sewer District number one, dated October twenty-first, twenty twenty-five. Our office has received review of plot plan that was last revised on August nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, which called Gudansky P E P L L C, prepared for the above reference project. We thank you for the opportunity to comment on this application, our comments are as follows, Rockland County Sewer District alone does not object to the shown. Project does not affect any sanitary sewers within the district, left most protected by son for this site. And it's on Nicholas King, engine with two. And a letter from Rockland County Center for Environmental Health, dated October twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five. Uh, we have received an application, plans are prepared, but hold Gudansky P E P L L C revised through June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five. For the above reference project, comments are as follows, application is to be made to the R C D O H to review between what a management system for compliance with the county mosquito code. And this is signed, Brandon Verin, two H B.
ZBA number twenty-five dash forty-nine, application of Alicia Bertunek and James Cook, owners. For variances from zoning code chapter forty-three, R fifteen district, group M, column eight, front yard, thirty feet required, twenty-seven point sixteen proposed. Column nine, side yard, twenty feet required, thirteen point one feet proposed. Uh, and column ten, total side yard, fifty feet required, thirty-eight point eight feet proposed for a two-story addition and a covered porch and an existing single-family residence. Premises are located at twenty-seven, sorry, court, Oliver, New York, identified on the Orange Town tax map as section six nine point zero five, block four, lot eight, in the R fifteen zoning district. Alright, just give us the rundown.
Sure. Uh, this application is to extend the garage side to make it a two-car garage, which is to the south of the property. And extend the second floor over that new garage. The garage moving to the south is what's causing the side yard setback. By reducing the side yard setback, we also need a variance for total side yard. The front yard, uh actually, the building is not getting any closer to the front yard. It's because we are covering a walkway that the setback is to the piers of the covered walkway. So, like I said, the building is not getting any closer to the to the front. So we, we are requesting variances for side yard, total side yard, and front yard setback. I have pictures of the existing house, if you haven't seen it. We've also provided stormwater mitigation, um, which means dry walls in the front yard. For the additional. Imperative surfaces created by the building itself. I submitted six or seven copies, I don't know why you get.
So the neighbor to the south, I guess the one that's most affected by the side yard, are you aware of any objections that they have to?
No, she hasn't commented on anything with us.
How long have you been?
Uh, two thousand eighteen.
What's the thought process behind the addition when you?
Two kids, got a three-year-old and a just turned one-year-old.
No, I mean, obviously, other side would be better for this type of variance, cuz it abuts the rear yard of that lot, but if you're trying to do it. Garage, that makes no sense to do it there.
Alright, does anyone from the audience wish to be heard on this? Please step up. Can you give your name and address, according?
I, um, Ellen Kathleen Urban, U R V A N.
Grandma?
One nineteen Violet. My only question is that with the, this addition, the house remains sold to a single family, right?
Uh, absolutely. Absolutely, uh, we'd be.
There wouldn't be no pass or anything.
I would not approve uh application that allowed for second two-family, absolutely not, yeah, yeah.
Okay, that, otherwise, fine?
Thank you. Alright, um, it's still good, right? So, you can stick around, I'll give answers for. You go ahead, make the motion close. All favor?
Thank you, have a great night.
Okay, make a motion to open, ZBA number twenty-five dash fifty, application by Diane Reformina and Joseph Brunelli, did I get that right?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And one second, I have a notarized application with a closing certificate, no letter of correspondence. What's your names?
My name's Joseph Brunelli.
Uh, Robert Palmerini, Rome Architecture.
And Diana Formina. Diana Formina.
Uh, Palmerini, P A L M E R I N I. Robert.
In the.
Contract, are you with the?
We be group, perfect.
Uh, ZBA number twenty-five dash fifty, fifty, application of Diane Reformina and Joseph Brunelli. Owners for variances from zoning code chapter forty-three, R fifteen district, group M, column eleven. Rear yard, thirty-five feet required, twenty-two point six seven feet proposed to legalize an existing deck as a single-family residence. The premises are located at forty-nine Liberty Road, Tapan, New York, and identified on the Orange Town tax map. As section seventy-seven point zero five, block three, lot twenty-eight, in the R fifteen zoning district. Um, so just tell us a little bit about uh what you're proposing.
Okay, so um, clients were in the process of selling the house, that the the um town had flagged the back deck uh cuz it wasn't permitted. So we're in the process of legalizing it and um, obviously, as the deck's shown, it's in the um, it's encroaching into the rear setback, so we're asking for a variance for the rear. Um, setback for the deck, um, it's currently uh like a twelve by nineteen deck that was built in twenty twenty. Just trying to think of the, and then, you know, in the location that it is, I mean, it's right off the family room, so uh, any place else doesn't really make sense if there was built. But um, the, you can see as the rear, the the property, uh, the rear setback line is the back of that house. So anything that was be created would have been kind of uh not conforming.
Did you guys build this deck or was the previous owner to?
We built the deck. It was during um, twenty twenty COVID, system of law moved in, we just needed somewhere to be outside, cuz we were wiping down bananas and everything else at that point.
You guys are moving though?
We're selling this. We live in block.
Okay, gotcha.
I have um, the new owners, they love the deck, and there's some letters from the neighbors, uh, you know.
Our rear neighbor and then across the street.
Right, and here's some, here's some photos of the deck, so you guys can see kinda what what was built there, so.
Alright, so I'm gonna read these into record, if you don't mind. So um. August twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-five, to the zoning board of Tappan, our town, I'm writing this letter about the application of variance by Joseph Brunelli at forty-nine Liberty Road. With regard to the deck, I have no issues or objections to the placement of their existing deck. Not giving for information, best regards, Vincent Alaphit, basis of Liberty Road, Tapan, New York. And then, same, this one's August eleventh, two thousand twenty-five, to me, I'm concerned, I am writing regarding my neighbor Joseph Brunelli, who resides at forty-nine Liberty Road. Comes to my attention, this deck is closer to our shared fence and zoning regulations typically allow, and needs a variance. I want to make it clear that I have no objection to the current placement of this deck. And fully supportive of it remaining where it is, it does not cause me any inconvenience, I am perfectly comfortable with the arrangement. Sincerely, Justin Geldan, eleven Musket Road, Tappan, New York, twenty-nine eighty-three.
And that's? That's the other side, yeah, so he's the one that's.
The one that's closest to it.
Exactly, yeah, yeah.
Does anyone else? No? Sure, any from the audience who should be heard on this?
I'll make sure.
Thank you guys. Motion closed? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Thanks to Paul, to the support, and her father's board, and the fact that presented the application, it's initial, it's in the record, since application, ZBA numbers twenty-five dash forty-seven, applicant Samfis. Twenty-five dash forty-eight, applicants Kay and Apthur, twenty-five dash forty-nine, applicants Bertunek and Cook, and twenty-five dash fifty, applicants Reformina. And Brunelli seek to construct, expand, the same to a three-family residence on an improved lot. Seek to construct, expand, replace a minor accessory or a pregnant residential structure. Seek area or bulk variances for construction or expansion of or relating to the single two or three family residence. And will seek only setback or lot line variances, these applications are exempt from environmental review under state environment acquire view act. Pursuant to secret regulations seventeen point five, paragraph C, sub paragraphs eleven, twelve, sixteen, and or seventeen. If you have any questions or comments, any ZBA number. And out by legal opinion as a motion, if you wish, by standing so moved, is recited by legal counsel. I so moved. All in favor?
Aye, aye.
You can say it's recited by legal counsel. Thank you, if not, I'm gonna bring something up. Uh, is that it? Alright, um, who's up?
Okay, I make a motion that we um approve the variances requested by Kathleen and Douglas Sampat. Um, legalize the deck, the existing deck. Not bring an undesirable change to the neighborhood, in the sense that it's been there for at least ten years. Um, it won't have any adverse effect, um, whether it's physical or environmental. I'll create, cuz they developed. So I make a motion that we.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Alright, uh, ZBA twenty-five forty-eight, um, I do think the variance asked for is substantial. Uh, in one case, they're asking for sixteen feet with thirty feet's required, basically fifty percent off. Uh, but it does abut the furthest point uh neighbors, the abutting neighbor's property from their house, so it's unique in that it's really far from their house. Um, also, I think the property is shaped uniquely. Um, so while I I don't love setting a precedent for allowing that large of a variance, I think this won't, because the property is unique and it is. Where where the house and the neighboring lot is situated is unique. Um, the pergola, it's close to the house, uh, two point three is very close, but it's diagonally set. So I don't think it's, it affects laddering or scaffolding or maintenance or anything with the house, cuz you can set it on one side or the other. Because it's diagonal, it doesn't get in the way either way. Uh, I don't think it changes the character of the neighborhood, in fact, this is a street with no outlet, and they're at the end of it, so there's no through traffic or anything like that. Uh, I don't see any environmental impact, so for those reasons, I make a motion to approve uh the three variances.
All in favor?
Aye.
I make a motion, we grant Bertunek and Cook addition to the growing family. There's no undesirable effects to the neighborhood or the environment and no other way to achieve.
All in favor?
Aye. Uh, I'd like to make a motion to approve ZBA application twenty-five dash fifty at forty-nine Liberty Road uh for the existing deck legalization. Um, it looks like it was tastefully done, it won't affect the character of the neighborhood and the neighborhood who's most directly affected by this, the uh variance request. Directly behind uh the property is in support of it, so for those reasons, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Make the motion close.
Aye.